And I pray that you would continue to give them your strength as they lean on us. In the name of Jesus, by all who speak.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united.
Here.
Councilperson Bailey?
Yes.
Fox?
Here.
Greenway?
Here.
Bailey?
Thank you, Madam. First item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Um, approval. For moved and supported, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tonight's agenda is approved. The next item is the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of May 16th. Approved.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those minutes are adopted. Proclamation, special presentations, we have none, public hearings, we have none. We're now on our first citizen comments and questions period. This one's a maximum of four minutes per speaker. Are there any who wish to progress to council, assist in citizen comments? Seeing none, we're back to council for any opening council comments. I just have a brief one to once again applaud the perseverance of the group that joined together around the Leslie sculpture project over a period of years. Certainly something that was very ambitious, a very costly prospect, and if you haven't seen the statue, it is truly magnificent, and we just are grateful for that move for their contributions building upon Kerwood, like I see in our city. Are there further council comments? Counselor Fox?
I had a couple of things. I was wondering if we can get an update on the status of the Treeboard project. It was, I think, for completion date and everything, if I remember well. June 15. So how are they on the, we get an update or anything pending on it?
Not that right now.
Well, sometime, I don't care. And one thing that I had brought up this morning, and it is probably an issue that will cause some conflict, or maybe not, hopefully. For years, the Kiwanis Club has been installing temporary handicap ramps throughout the county. Hobbies for people are temporary while they're in wheelchairs and stuff so they can get in and out of their hollies. And Chuck Hague has been heading that up pretty much. And the Voice Gals came to him about Hague. They wanted to do a project alone, I think, with the Kiwanis Club or with Kiwanis Club and the Westinghouse or something, on a handicap ramp, temporary ramp on Comstock Street. And they ran into a problem about needing a permit and different things. And so I'm wondering, this is a nonprofit organization doing things, and it's just a thing to help handicapped people get in and out, live a normal life. Some of them are there for 30 days, some of them may be there for a longer period of time. And is there some way that we can do that without prints from an architect and different things like that? Well, the Voice Gals evidently ran into a problem when they went down to try to follow everything as far as getting permission and permits and so forth, and then it was technicalities and all this and that. And I think some of these volunteer things and the private home and stuff, they are built, the dimensions and everything that the Kiwanis Club puts them in are through ADA standards. And so is there some way that we can make sure that this is still available and these Voice Gals get an opportunity to go out and do a project in the community, which is part of the program?
I think that's something we should do. I know they've got kind of specifications from prior projects and the way it's quite smooth and safe. I know we have waived fees in the past, so I'm not sure what their touch point was in the city, but we should definitely make sure that happens again. Is that not true? Are there further council comments?
Uh, I'd like to say it's, might even not yet, you know, we're in the morning clock. It does the ramps, and I guess there has been quite a bit of controversy because they have been building ramps outside of the city, and it's too big because there are many residents within the city who can't get out. So I'm hoping we can figure the way to that.
Yeah, certainly. So we have done some of it in the city, or at least more recently, almost last year, I think it was.
Right.
Just to make sure it's voiceable and certain.
Yeah, thank you.
Further council comments? Assistant Mayor.
I would just like to say that Wasso really doesn't know how to throw a good party. It was a fun week and a pretty safe one. The weather cooperated, lots of money for good causes, and a lot of community spirit. So I'm just so proud to be affiliated in the city.
Further? Hearing no city manager's request to press Tray Ward during your report, which is no. It's a city manager's report.
I don't know. Last time I was down there, I noticed Treeboard, but there's two entities down there, isn't there? Treeboard and there's another entity out there. Treeboard put up fence along.
The fence around there for a river, and we're supposed to be doing that. And then the Selly property, which is kind of co-ownership there, is in the process of putting their bollards up for their property line demarcation.
Now, the final thing, was they supposed to put shrubs around, the trees around?
She was either supposed to, she asked to be able to put in an obscuring sort of fencing using shrubbery, and she had until June 15th to complete that of this year to be able to put those shrubs in or complete that fencing. So I'm not sure. You have been familiar with that, have you started on that process?
The fence is complete, except for a 10-foot spot that they're having issues with the railroad right away. But the fence is in place. She's done a lot of landscaping in front of it. The bollards on the part where Howard Street kind of splits off there are pretty much in place, except for one, but it marks out the property line pretty nicely on where they can encroach. And then on, what is it, Division Street, that would be what's going down there. And then on Saginaw, they have postmarks where they cannot go past, and they've been staying past there. They've been complying with everything that we've asked of them.
What kind of fences they put over there behind the building off of the Howard Street where the, you know, I guess it's Howard Street, but it looks more like their drive going up into the building. Behind that building, what kind of fences there? Is that a privacy fence?
Well, what was agreed upon at the site plan was an obscuring fence, so they have the chain link, and then they were going to put in either shrub or screening in that chain.
Okay, well, bringing that up, it was a private fence site, I was on Mount Tom Avenue, and I looked back in there, and it looked like there was a privacy fence up there. That may be, probably be dispossessable.
Yeah, there's, so if you're looking directly at Tray Ward, there's the chain link on, I think that's the north and east side of it, and then there's privacy fence on the south side of the building.
Anything that abutted residential, they had to put the obscuring reported to that. If it's not abutting residential, they don't have to do the obscuring with that. They could just be an open chain link fence.
Well, I knew that the abutting on it, we, on the residential property, they could have a chain link, but there was supposed to be obscuring green or whatever, and they were talking about tall grass.
Yeah, she talked about doing the tall grass. And that may take a while for that grass to grow in height this first year being planted, but planning commission was okay with that at that point in time, because they knew that that would fill if yours survived.
Just make sure they get their obscuring in.
Yes.
Because it's going to take time to grow. We've had some problems with other projects where they asked for trees, and the trees they put in died and then never replaced, and different projects.
Right. We have been making sure to keep an eye on that progress.
Excellent, thank you.
City manager's report?
Just kind of quickly go down the list here. The one that gets the agenda tonight will be compressor pavement breaking equipment. They're facing a 36-year-old air compressor. I hope they build a new one as good as they built that one. That's pretty good. One that's coming down, which people may wonder what's going on, is that we're going out for bids, which will be opened on June 14th, for vehicle towing services. This has been handled by County 911, and things changed, and so we have a certain responsibility now. When there's a breakdown or accident within the city or nearby that we may be responding to, that we have to have a towing company to do that towing. So we've written a set of specs and gone out for bid on that. We've also, for, it seems like we just received one ambulance, that we're going out for bid for a second ambulance. Those bids will be opened on June 14th, and we'll get delivery sometime next year. Also on the agenda tonight, which we'll cover a little later, is the Kerwood Cabin, which has been donated to the city, and now we're going about moving that in place. The Chestnut Street water main along South Chestnut and Frederick South Street has been installed. We're doing testing right now, and soon the service lines for the homes along there will be connected to it. The Stormwater Asset Management Program, or SOLGAM, continues. The televising continues throughout the city. Cleaning, we are having, we're going faster than our crew as far as cleaning can keep up with them, so we're having to contract, and a bid is out on that, for additional cleaning services in order for us to keep the time scheduled. Tremendous amount of time, seems like, has been spent dealing with the Cargill-Sonoco roadway and water main project. I think we've got everything in place for going to bid. We're about 95 to 99 percent complete with the specifications. We've got the documents ready for Sonoco for the deeding of the right-of-way and the granting of the easements. Some of this is tying in, well, we've got everything with Great Lakes Central Railroad in place as well. We've got a couple other little issues, and the other is tying in with the Cargill purchase of the land from us, materials, documents are in the MEDC. Speaking of Cargill, everything seems to be on the train as far as their particular schedules concerned. So really, at this point, even though it seems like it's taking forever, things seem like they're meshing well for everybody's project there. But yeah, it looks like that we will probably be aiming to have the project completed next spring rather than this fall, which will be to, hopefully to everybody's advantage financially, as contractors definitely want to give us better pricing during the winter months. North Street Culvert, the work on that is scheduled to begin July 11th, which I guess is just a few days away, and the total completion should be by October 10th. The Gould Street project will begin on June 13th and be completed by October 14th, or probably long before then. There will be at times on both of these projects closures. The one on North Street will be a much longer duration. The Gould Street will probably be just closed for specific hours and probably not even days at a particular time. First part of our double-tip ceiling project, dealing with this 2015 street program, has been completed. Contractor has left town, but will be back in a few days to complete those streets and some that we have added to the project. Sanitary landfill project, finally, I guess all the pieces are together for signing of the contracts and proceeding with the work there. Just simply mention, you know, the facade grants, which we have, but I guess it's what 12 applications at the present time to proceed. The only issue right now is whether or not MEDC will fund all of those, as they're saying, that they don't have the staff to maybe fund all of those, and that's an issue that we'll be dealing with in the future. And finally, on the wayfinding signs, the MVA approvals have been received. The specifications in place of those which have been funded should be going up ultimately soon. I think that probably. Just get questions on other items.
Just curious again, when the Brownfield Commission may be meeting on Cargill.
As soon as we get the stuff back from MEDC.
Assistant Mayor. Comments, Assistant Mayor's report?
Hey, Councilor Fox. Previously, I had asked for three hires for the public service to work on the Kink Masons to get a date of June 1st. Are we moving on that? Do we have the three guys?
I'm not sure whether they have been hired yet or not, that they've gone through the interview process.
Seeing more and more and more of these whole break.
We're on the consent agenda. Move adoption?
Support.
Moved and supported, this is not a debatable motion. But of course, please take your role.
Councilperson Platts?
Yes.
Lieutenant Level?
Yes.
Councilperson Bailey?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Mayor Frither?
Yes, the consent agenda is adopted. Items of business, number one, relocation and restoration of Kerwood Castle, excuse me, cabin, that'd be quite a task. Consider approving a contract with RG Log Builders LLC to move the Kerwood Cabin from its current location to Kerwood Castle Park, an amount of $29,600, and authorized payments to the contractor according to the terms of the contract. Or Tim O'Leary?
Well, I just wanted to say I'm very excited about this. I think this is a great permanent improvement to the park, just like the statue was. To be adding two things like this in one year is just awesome. I'd like to applaud the continuous work of Mr. Robert Duran, who is the executive director of the Historical Commission of Mr. Properties here in Wasso. So I'm fully supportive, and I will move approval.
Second.
What's the timetable, Robert? Do you have an idea?
We're hoping to have it in place and partially completed by July 28th. That doesn't include the restoration and the re-chinking part, just the foundation and the cabin.
Very good. We do have a motion of support and further discussion on this item. Councilor Fox?
Question. There's been talk about this would be located behind the castle along the river, and I've had several people that have had concerns about it being there partially hidden, more susceptible to vandalism, and there's an area between the castle and the house over there where a tree was taken down in that area, and they, a lot of people seem to think that that would be a better place for it because it would be seen coming down the street and the attention would be drawn to it. And I've had other people say, well, maybe, why not put it up by the old, the other cabin and draw those things together? So I just wanted to bring that out as an information thing, and I think really it would be good to put this up more in the old.
Further comments? Assistant Greenway?
Yeah. A lot of conversation and discussion was made about the placement of the cabin. All things considered, and the cameras have been installed, whichever are from the wall trained down on the cabin, as far as vandalism, we're not really concerned with that. And having looked at all of the spots around the castle, that seems to be best one. It's a simple opinion of the commission and others.
Susan, what is the grant envision? I know that it envisaged some lighting improvements in the front. Is there any type of paths or things like that that would?
There'd be connecting sidewalk to that.
Yes.
I just couldn't recall. Thank you. We do have a motion of support. Madam Kirk, please take your role.
Councilperson Greenway?
Yes.
Lieutenant Level?
Yes.
Councilperson Bailey?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Frither?
Yes, the contract is authorized. Item two is Maiden Wasso exhibition banner permission. Consider they requested the Historical Commission for placement of a banner on the columns of City Hall for the duration of the Maiden Wasso exhibition, June 10th through September 19th, 2016. Will move approval.
Support.
Moved and supported. Councilwoman Bailey?
I guess I'd just like to know if there's, I'm sure you're doing it as a marketing piece. It's prominent, it's big, whatever, but I was just wondering if there's any place else. I know I've seen a couple other things up around town. Is there anything else that we could do instead of putting it on the City Hall? Any other places that we could consider?
You're talking to me? Oh, well, we already have two banners. We have one on the corner of 21 and 52, and then we have one on the corner of Washington and Main, right here. But our thought was to really, since this is such a large-scale community project, and we have 14 city organizations and nonprofits involved in Maiden Wasso, our thought was to engage the whole community by putting the banners up on the columns of City Hall.
So the process, I guess that question as well, because every time we do this, it's going to come to city council, and we're going to have to wait for it to be on the agenda in the course of so. I guess that we're going to allow banners, which I don't, I guess I have a problem with putting a banner up there, but it just seems like it's a pretty cumbersome process if it's going to be a policy that we're going to allow with these stipulations that have to be done. So that's my comment.
Well, there's a couple other things. It's interesting, the Code of Origins is, addresses banners. Once upon a time, apparently there was banners in front of City Hall, because there's anchors for them that are in place. The code states banners extending over public property, except as authorized by the city are prohibited. Okay, I think that meant on the roadways. I don't think that.
Contact field.
The zoning code for this district states that such a sign requires a permit and should not exceed 312 feet. So that, and then you go to the Downtown Historic Commission, states, it states their approval would have to be given to any banners that are placed within the historical district level, not to what degree we've ever dealt with that. But I think, you know, we went through any procedure like this, it ought to be more of a blanket approval, which, you know, if they're going to be allowed, they're allowed. Now, that brings you back to the, to the next issue, as to who may put up banners, how long, whether you have permit fees for them. And we're far from being the exception in that case, as having that as an issue, because community after community tries to address that one, and there's no one particular way in which they do it. You know, some say, well, they'll have this, that certain words can't be put on it. Others say they have to be the colors, which I think more fits in with the historic district permissions bit, because, like I say, on improvements we've made to this building, exterior ones, we have taken before the historic permission. When we want to put exterior signs on public safety buildings, the State Department District Commission turned it down.
Councilor Fox?
Question is, who's going to maintain this banner? Who's going to put it up to begin with? How is it going to be secured so that when it's not blowing and losing, blowing and throwing, laughing? And if that happens, who's going to come back and take care of it? Is there going to be another job public services going to be? Public works is going to be burned away, or is there other people that could come and maintain that banner? We got enough work with public works right now that they're struggling to keep on what they hate, or something else on them, as a banner come loose. They're going to have to up here with a couple of men and come off the job and put it up. So that's my concern, is our public works is kind of overlooked right now and chose.
Is it to be volunteered or maintained?
Yes.
I think the city manager makes a point about some kind of a more extensive permission. What makes me comfortable with this particular request is that we actually have a subdivision of the city in effect asking for permission. Just as Parks and Recreation, let's say, had a major as an appointed body of the city. Maybe there's a more broad way we can.
Craft that word.
Have it be known, but yeah, there's a direct city affiliation in this case for any future requests.
That's the question with banners, which are the process.
Yes.
It's pretty cumbersome.
I don't recall this ever having come up, that I can remember.
If, for some reason, I think they must have stopped many years ago. No idea.
Okay.
Can we do some bervage, not necessarily this important night, but for the future in case it's ever asked again, that it would be something affiliated with the city, or, you know, whatever the prerequisites were, so that we have some control over what goes up, and we're not playing favorites, it's just we're trying to figure out parameters. And then charge a million dollars.
We've drafted a policy for us to consider for future ones. Can I ask you them then, and it's going to be put up by volunteers and maintained by volunteers, not by our public group people?
The judge has been fine with that, that we cannot be controlled, restricted, and we can only be advised, restricted.
Well, that's, isn't that a part, that's a part of the sign.
No, that's all one, making that we regulate in the city, we cannot be content.
Only maybe a question is about this particular sign request. There has been a motion, I forget it, has there been support?
Yes.
Okay, it's been supported. I'll call her on, please.
Councilperson Platts?
Yes.
Lieutenant Level?
Yes.
Councilperson Bailey?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes.
Mayor Frither?
Yes, the permission is granted in this case, and I'd ask a staff review for initial policy.
It has to be understood, it has to be approved by the Downtown Historic Commission.
Does that need to be added to our amendment or our trial?
I think we understand it properly.
It's got to be done by volunteers.
Okay, so, moving on to number three, Brownfield Redevelopment Grant Contract Amendment for the Nova Site, amendment number one. Move approval?
Support.
Moved and supported. Hearing no discussion, Madam Kirk, please take your role.
Councilperson Bailey?
Yes.
Platts?
Yes.
Lieutenant Level?
Yes.
Councilperson Greenway?
Yes.
We have to.
Yes, the contract is amended. Item four, 1617 water and sewer rates. Glenn, if you please, address this, overview. Can you give us a general overview, and we can get into the weeds as council, ask any questions they may have?
These rates for this fiscal year are very similar to what was proposed for last year. I think with coming in here and working with the grants, and still trying to understand the impact of SOLG grants and the assets that we are identifying, and we have the fund for the long term, I would not appear to recommend anything more detailed, I guess, or even higher, which is not popular. I think this reflects some modest increases that I put into the budget and the rates reflect that as well. The only major for the difference between this year and last year was that I added a dollar to the capital charge, which we have to move forward on with the water main. dollar to the capital charge, which we have to move forward on with the water main replacements, and certainly now because of the flood crisis, there are more regulations coming down the road that we'll have to deal with, the service lines. I think the other component, other than we taking ownership responsibility for raising the rates for what we feel the right things to do for infrastructure, we have the state of Michigan that's also our, what we call the silent partner, but they are a partner. So they have a wastewater side and a water side. Wastewater side, there'll be a permit process, the asset management component, which will be enforced upon municipalities to establish five and twenty-year capital programs, and you've got to demonstrate that you've got the finance mechanisms in place and be able to account for that up to ninety percent of the funding needed over the short and long run. That's not in our permit now, but our permit's in the process of being renewed. It will be in there by October of this year, and it looks like most other communities could have the same requirement. On the water side, you don't have a permit, but you have what's called a sanitary survey. The state has now addressed the same components as the wastewater side for having asset management plans in place, and also some of the same funding requirements. So I believe by next year we'll have a better idea what these five and twenty-year plans will look like, and we'll be able to find the kind of funding that we need for state components, as well as our own needs here locally. But to not raise them and wait, I think, is probably not good practice, because it's always hard to take a shot, well, quite upfront. It's better to raise them gradually each year, try and stay within the recommended consumer inflation injections for consumer business. I think that's a modest increase. If it happens next year, it's not going to be catastrophic, and I want to fear anyone unless it's that it's going to be higher than that.
Thank you. Back to council for any comments or motions. I think it's very important to, you know, this is the most vital service that we provide as a city, besides fire and ambulance, and, you know, everybody here at this table pays these rates as well. So nobody likes to see any price go up, but like Glenn said, it's a very modest increase. So I want to make sure our infrastructure stays safe and sound. I realize we don't have any lead water mains left in the city, but we certainly don't want to see anything happen to our water infrastructure, as it's happened to the point. So I'm supportive, and I would move approval. Move is supported for the discussion. I get what you mean. Councilman Fox?
The increase, though it seems small, of the one dollar for your water main capital, do we have a plan in place at the present time for replacing water mains? Or is this something we're just talking about some more? This has been going on for years, Glenn, and this is... It gets a little bit out of hand sometimes.
Sure. That's a fair question. That's a good question. We do have a list of water mains that are targeted as low priority, but I think what we're going to have for next year, with the development of a water model, a geodatabase for water system, you're going to build and analyze those needs and the system much better, to have more quantitative data to validate some of those main projects, and then that's going to help with setting priorities on which ones have to be replaced first. So, yes, we do. It's not up to the requirements that the state wants, it's certainly not up to the requirements I would like, having done this before, but I think next year it'll be restructured and much better to establish a five and twenty-year plan.
Well, we know that next year we're going to be replacing some water mains on Oliver Street as we do the street reconstruction and stuff, but it seems like this has been a program of increase and increase and increase of fees and charges, but we never saw the plan go forward and get the water mains replaced, and then we tear up the streets because we got a water main, the breaks, and other breaks from the same main down the road just a little bit. So it concerns me that we need to look at some of those. And, you know, we're here looking out for our... Here, but we're also, we need to be able to clarify things with the customer, right? I don't want to be like the oil company and just raise up and down the gas prices, right? We don't want to see our water prices out of control. And another question I have is on the sewer UC charge, the increase in that, and how do we, because this wastewater treatment plant is the Mid-County Wastewater Treatment Board Authority in London, basically, how do we recoup the operational expense from the townships in the city of Corona? And it looks like we've got, what, seventy percent of the cost, did I see?
It's based on flow. When I established the operating budget for the plant operations, those portions are allocated based on flow, and that's where they get billed, and we get... That gets adjusted each month, but their portion of pain is based on that, and I get a bill.
The reason I'm asking that is because they use it, and this charge supposedly UC is to take care of the increase in chemicals and stuff. That's part of it. The biggest part of it, right? And so, and then also, as we use that equipment, where is the stuff? What kind of program we have, we know that their, the other users are paying their share. And the point is, how do you base UCs? How do you charge them for flow? What kind of fee is that? Is it based upon, we've got, we're going to twenty now, going to thirty per unit of meter of water, so we got a basis for how we're doing it, but what's the basis? How do we go for their metered flow so that they're paying for most of what we're paying?
Based on your annual operating expenses, and that's how it's apportioned out. They're paying for their share of the plant operations that processes their wastewater. That's how you do that.
Are they based... We're paying for our share too, based upon water usage.
Correct.
Okay, so now Corona, we could base Corona on how much water they pull from loss, right? If we push it not hard enough, or how do you do with the places that they're operating off of well? How do you meter that, really, so it's, you know... Because we're sitting down here at the plant, and we've got an influx and the input to the plant, how do we know where it's coming from and how much it really is? Are we going to charge them the same kind of rate that we're charging, or are we going to charge them double?
Well, we are working on these flows, which is also part of the SAW grant. We're doing modeling and full monitoring out there. That's also part of this. You know, bigger issue on that, I hope by answering your question, is that we have average daily flows from the local municipalities, and we have peak flows. Right now, some of those peak flows have exceeded what we can handle, this is a large part of all the others consent over right now. So we are still working on that. We are talking to the municipalities, and put a little bit more heat on them, and come up with some options or recommendations on how they can reduce their flows.
Who actually owns this plant?
The city.
So we can set the charges?
Yes.
To those people?
Yes.
I just want to make sure they're paying their share, because our people are getting raises every year, and I just don't think that the townships in Corona should get away with any less than what our customers are getting away with. We need to make sure. In fact, if we charge them double over in Corona for water, then maybe we'll be able to charge double for the usage of wastewater treatment.
Take the under, but...
I mean, those are the kinds of things that I look at, set here. Our citizens are owner of the plant, and if it costs us more to use that plant and doesn't, that's not fair for the operation of the SAW. That's why I question these increases.
I think you've got a pretty good structure in place right now, and that's other than...
We do have a motion of support. Madam Kirk, please take your role.
Counselperson Greenway?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Black?
No.
Hotel Number?
Yes.
Mayor Kirk?
Yes, the twenty sixteen seventeen water and sewer rates are up. We're on the communications calendar. Are there any comments from council on that calendar? Hearing none, we're on the second and final citizen comments and questions period. This one's a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If there are any wish to address the council? Yes, Tom? Could you give your name and address, please?
Name's Tom Ryan, Euphren Community News and Views, address is twenty-nine ten West Main, Washtetown Township. Two items, please. One is, did the... I understand that the fees for the water and sewers listed in your packet, but you didn't mention that, you didn't verbalize for the people who will be watching this online, how much you've just raised their taxes. So what I'm asking you, and it's not on the agenda, what I'm asking you is please verbalize so people can listen online and know, how much did their rates just go up? Number two, I was asked by a resident here in Owasso to ask you this question, because she works evenings and cannot come. When is the park's going to start getting mowed again? I contacted our city manager, Don Crawford, who says that they're no longer going to mow the park along the river by the City Hall. Lady across the street from there, across the river, is very upset. She has to look at that. We just had Kerwood Festival, and we had people from all over coming and taking a look at that rat's nest down there, mosquito, whatever, and we heard people were very upset and didn't leave Owasso with a very good taste in their mouth on how well we take care of our properties. Another thing that I heard was that possibly our bond may be changed, because we're not taking proper care of our properties anymore. Is that a... And that is another question. Is our bond rating going to be changed because we're no longer maintaining our parks? So the question is, could you please verbalize the rates? And number two, can you tell us when is the lawn going to start to get mowed again? Because remember, the last meeting, you wanted to start charging people for having toys in the yard, for blood. That was. Anything that was against the city code would be fined. So you can roll your eyes all you want, but that is what the question was. So now, I'm asking that, leaving it in your ballpark. Thank you very much.
Other citizen comments?
Yes, please.
Could you give your name and address?
My name's Martin Kent. Is there anything you want to add? Today I come over here, it's a concern about a tree that's in front of my house. Actually, there's a lot of branches falling down, some of them are real big. So I talked to the lady in the upstairs, means I want to move the tree out, but the lady said that the trees are so healthy, they are not going to move out. So I asked a gentleman, I gave an opinion, he is Bill Robinson, he's the owner of the Tree Service Company, and he told me that this tree actually is not safe at all, because he said, you can see the sidewalk, the sidewalk already coming out, because the root of that tree is holed, it's going to be holed. And I asked him, how come the branches always fall down? And he said that because they don't have enough nutrition, go all the way up, that's why the branches fall down. So I talked to him, so what I can do, because the lady told me that if you want to remove the tree, you must come down to the car, to the gentleman. And he said that you can take a picture of this tree, and show them the condition of the tree, let them understand. So today I take the picture right here, hopefully I can show you, the gentleman, of this tree.
Yes.
So can I do it all right now or what?
Certainly now, we're just waiting. We need to adjourn in a couple minutes here. Heard that I'd be fine. Yeah, we can get down to the table. Well, I see it's on your device.
Is that...
Yes, that's fine.
So right now, what's going to be?
Yeah, I think with it being on a device, yes.
Show Mark over there in the blue striped shirt, he'll be the person to talk to.
By the way, name? He has the locust tree, and it's actually the kind of type that is, the arborist has looked at the tree, it is a healthy tree. He's requesting to have it taken down, and go through a procedure, or have a contractor take it down.
Are there further citizen comments? Yes. Could you give your name and address, please?
Chairman of the MISO, which is the Northern Area Emergency Services Authority, and I've been working with, talking with Kevin about a contract for ambulance service for Northern township, and if you have one, if Jerry Brown grew up, I just wondered what that said as well, for the commission, or what council, for taking action on it, or are you waiting for us to take action?
Didn't I reiterate that there was a delay for your consideration by...
Well, ours is still under staff review. We have to see the final draft approval through the city manager's office and our finance director. So once that's done, most likely the first meeting in July is going to come our council approval.
Okay. We're, I'm hopefully going to make this change first of July.
I'll talk to you after this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there further citizen comments? Hearing none, we'll take it back to council for any closing council comments this evening. Councilman Fox?
Hi. I'm going to charge the lot, I'll sit here, and I've got answers, and I know the county has been aware of the situation going on with the tractor, and do we have a solution for your bias council, do we have that?
Yes. Mark, you want to explain the situation with the tractor? Last week, we met with the state police that came down in the garage. They weighed the tractor. They have given us permission to drive it on front lawn. Basically, actually, it's actually full, if it doesn't have anything in the holding tank, there would be a thousand pounds still on the way, where we could, we're saying to drive it.
Not being...
So they have issued an email to their employees to bother them.
Does that mean we...
That's the guy that...
That's the one, I'm certain. But you are, you didn't tell me you were writing up something for our city streets that they can carry on the truck in case they threaten to stop on the track. Okay, just so I want to make sure.
Just so I want to make sure. Further council comments? I just want to thank the EPW for going over the crest of the riverbank area by Kerwood in response to some outreach. Appreciate that very much. With that, all of a sudden, the whole committee, so votes? Support? Move in supportive? All of you, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? We agree.